Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall for this November 4th Planning Commission meeting. We will first start off with Denise reading the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item one, approval of October 7, 2015, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, October Platts. Item three, 3669, 2015, rezone from RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District with conditions to modify the sideyard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet located south of West 85th Street and west of Southwestern Avenue. Item four, 3675, 2015, rezone from RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional to RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density for Loud Forms located at 700 North French Avenue. Item five, 3676, 2015, rezone from O Office to RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density for Loud Forms located at 800 South Sycamore Avenue.
Oh, thank you. Thanks Denise, I'm sorry. Are there any objections from anyone in the audience on items number one through five? All right, seeing none, are there any objections from the commissioners? All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the consent agenda items have been passed. If you are here for items number one through five, you are free to leave at this time. Now we will move to approve the regular agenda.
No move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, the regular agenda, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All right, the regular agenda has been approved.
Item six, 2358, 2015, rezone from AG Agricultural District to the CN Conservation and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts for Loud Forms located north of West 41st Street and west of South T Ellis Road.
And that item is deferred until the December meeting? All right, thanks Diane, I need a motion to defer item number six to the December meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number six will be deferred to December meeting.
Item seven, 3238, 2015, rezone from the CN Conservation District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density Districts for Loud Forms located at the southwest corner of West 12th Street and South Discovery Avenue.
Good evening, Jeffrey Schmidt representing planning staff on even, uh, items this evening. This item has been before you in the past. It went to city council and it was recommended back to you for further review. It's a amended version of what you saw previously. You can see in this proposed zoning exhibit, the previous one that you saw was all RA1. The RA1 is multifamily apartments and at that point even they were looking at doing a lower density than the apartment standard. Through further discussions with the applicant, they're bringing in a row of RD for twin home townhomes, which is along Browning Street and adjacent to that single family residential neighborhood to add to that transition. Again, staff was always in support of the RA1 transitioning into Discovery and up to 12th Street. This again helps with that transition between the RA1 at the busy intersection and the single family neighborhood. You can see with the exhibits that you have in front of you, the twin homes being along the frontage of the street and then the multifamily more units are going out on Discovery and then going out to 12th Street. With this new recommendation or this new proposal, again, staff continues to support this, we think this is a good proposal to be moved forward.
All right, thanks Jeff, any questions for Jeff?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Denny, did you?
I didn't say anything.
Okay, Nick?
Me, all right. Jeff, one question, the, um, the building shall be no more than one story in height, is that for both RA and the RD?
That's correct, it would go with this rezoning.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks Jeff. Would the petitioner please come forward and state your name and address?
Nicholas Vanover shield, 2604 West Bitterroot Street, Sioux Falls. Again, you guys had seen the previous plan of the 33 units. Um, that was approved back in September. After that meeting, we had another neighborhood meeting, I had multiple conversations with Luke Fortney, the spokesperson for the neighborhood. And, um, we just decided we needed to tweak some things. Big hot button was, um, well, there's multiple hot buttons, but, uh, they wanted some owner occupied units. So these twin homes along Browning Street will be owner occupied with the homeowners association. Um, that was kind of concern number one, so we found some middle ground there. There was two access points before, the one on Discovery that's still there, but there's also a second one coming around that was over on Browning. We've eliminated that one. Um, so it's just one access and then on, um, there's overflow parking concerns too. Um, each unit does have two parking stalls per unit, but you can see on your exhibit, we added seven additional parking stalls for, for overflow parking. And then, um, since we only have one way in and out now, we put in a fire truck turnaround lane and at the end of that fire truck turnaround lane, that's for the dumpster enclosure, uh, we'll go for the, the 21 townhome units now. The contingency will still stand that we discussed before. Uh, we do have a six-foot privacy fence that'll go all along the backside. Um, that's not showing on here, I don't think, there's, do you guys have the landscape rendering exhibit at all or maybe not? That's not in there. Okay. Anyway, Luke and I had been working through that, the fence, there'll be a fence behind the townhome units and then all along the west side. Um, yeah, so it'll go along there and then up along the west side on the property line between us and the light industrial zoning to the west. Yeah, but it stops on 12th. There will, and then along the, the RD1 zoning, um, which is the left side there, that'll be, um, just a berm and some trees because there's a drainage easement there that we can't put a fence in. So with that, I guess, any other questions for me?
Right, any questioners for the applicant? No, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item?
Hello, my name is Luke Fortney, I live at 500 South Beretta Lane. I'm almost right across the street from this complex here. Uh, I did meet with Nick and we did discuss some landscaping things and we actually discussed the townhomes or the twin homes going from the proposed townhomes to the twin homes along Browning and we do appreciate that as a neighborhood. I think, um, a lot of the people are, are pleased that he did that. One thing I do want to talk about is the, uh, the, the original rezone for this whole development was done about 14 years ago and when they did that, this parcel right here was supposed to be zoned to ag and it was mistakenly zoned by the city to the conservation. And I first found out about this from Steve Melgarde, the property owner, and then the city confirmed it when I asked them about it. Uh, I think that this should be kind of made, made known to you guys and the city council that, you know, when you zone something to CN, you don't really anticipate when you build a house right across the street or from it, you don't anticipate it, uh, becoming an apartment complex. And the other fact is that there are no covenants applied to this parcel, whereas all of the rest of the land in the neighborhood, the covenants do apply to. And I do understand that you guys cannot enforce covenants, so I'm not asking you to. Um, we, I did meet with Nick and, um, we, we found some middle ground, so I'm not asking you to reject his proposal and, and throw it out. Uh, what I would ask is that maybe the city consider, um, in conjunction with Nick, planting some trees along the property right across the street from it. The city does own that property and I think that would make a lot of the neighborhood happy and, you know, who's against planting trees, make the tree huggers happy too. Um, so I think the city should take that into consideration. I, I know that a lot of the neighborhood feels deceived that the, it was mistakenly zoned and then obviously no covenants add on top of that. Um, so I think you guys should maybe take that into consideration and if there's any city council members that watch this, I would like them to take that into consideration as well.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item?
I just want to say I did forget to mention that I want.
Could you please come forward and, thank you.
I had, I had it in my notes, but I did forget to mention that I want to work side by side with Luke figuring out some type of trees along the south side of Browning if we can, so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, one quick, so you're talking about on the, the other side of the street of then the subject property?
Yep, right along there down towards then, right where you just stopped there, that's where Luke's, um, home is at.
Okay.
Just another, some type of buffer and again, but trade buffer is probably one of the best buffers, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Please come forward.
Sorry, I forgot to talk about just one item. Uh, when I met with Nick, he had not originally intended to make these town, or not townhomes, I'm sorry, the twin homes along Browning. He had not intended to make them owner occupied. Uh, the neighborhood really wanted them owner occupied and he said that he would. Uh, he also said he would make, he would be willing to make that part of the conditional rezone along with the landscape plan. So I just wanted to ask if we can make a motion to, uh, make that a stipulation of the rezone along with that landscape plan. That's, I see, he doesn't have that here tonight, but, um, he does have a landscape plan that we work together on, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address this? All right, seeing none, I'll look, oh, I'm sorry, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Brian Erickson, I live at 504 South Beretta Lane. Um, I just wanted to, um, speak to you guys in behalf of myself actually because I commend the changes, uh, the coming forward, the process was new to me and learning that was a, a change. And when I looked at Shape Sioux Falls originally and then Shape Places and I was like, when the first, first time we're here, I'm like, how does this transition work? And I'm, I couldn't figure out how it passed the first time and I can look back in history, 2012 and then others, like, uh, I just quick counters, like 684 motions by you guys and only eight were, were, had a motion against and one rejection. So that kind of made me feel better that you guys recognized that, so that there was an issue with the plan and maybe not everybody's on board, but I appreciate that and the changes and I think, I really want to be on record too that the changes, the reason why we're here today is because the changes are proposed, I think there's some common grounds there, but some stipulations, we want to make sure that you guys are taking the fact that that is on record so that we can, um, really guarantee that's what it's going to be. Um, uh, we did have some feeling that deception because we have the, what we found, um, as we moved into these neighborhoods and invested in those, that we had this conservation area and then also we find out later that, okay, there was a clerical mistake and we looked at, you know, history, we look at, I started digging more into this and there was a public input for this and we look at what we see in the surrounding communities, they have the same, some judicial precedent sent, uh, that had been put forth because there was no public input for rezoning changes. So I just wanted to make that out there too, just, uh, just as an informational thing, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, can I have Jeff come up and answer a question or two? Um, one question, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we can put conditions that would affect, um, a different property. So a condition to be plant trees across the street?
Um, that's correct, that's something that they can talk to the property owner about and we can go in that direction, but you wouldn't put a condition on somebody else's property that's not being addressed tonight.
And I, my guess is we also couldn't say it has to be owner occupied and it can't be rental?
That's correct. Um, we conferred, the city attorney and I, our conditions that we continue to try to look at for conditions on rezonings have to do, in our language is bulk regulation, something that we can really go out there and enforce and interpret. Um, heights that you can measure, setbacks, parking stalls, things that are measurable in regards to the who lives in a unit, that's a civil action and how would we enforce that, how would we know who's living there? Um, and then the discrimination aspect of trying to go out there and tell people who can live in a unit, who can't. That's not something the city's going to try to enforce. Thank you.
Thanks Jeff.
Madam Chair, motion to approve as staff recommended, staff recommended for discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
I for one, as I looked at this revised plan, do appreciate the additional buffering zone with the new row of twin homes and the additional this cooperation that is clearly apparent between the, uh, the developer and the, uh, neighborhood. It's very nice to see.
I also think the limitation of the one story in height as recommended by staff and, uh, apparently agreed to by the landowner makes a lot of sense for continuing to be, um, kind of sensitive to, uh, the neighbors and the area, so it makes a lot of sense too.
Madam Chair. I would say kudos to Nick for, you know, making the effort to work with the neighbors and get something that everybody can seem to agree on. It's not everybody's willing to do that, so, you know, we appreciate your willingness to do that and I think it comes with a better product that way.
I'd just like to say thank you to you also, I mean, a lot of people, we get a lot of times where we'll get a developer that comes in and, uh, doesn't want to work with the neighbors and just wants to push a product through and I appreciate, you know, taking the time and meet with them and appreciate your guys' input and, uh, rallying the troops and that type of stuff and meeting with the developer to get some stuff done, so.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Move on to item number eight.
Item eight, 3665, 2015, rezone from AG Agricultural District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District for Loud Forms located at the southeast corner of West 85th Street and South Brett Avenue.
This is a relatively small five acre parcel, the south part of town. You can see on the exhibit up in front of you that it's RA2 to the west and there's RA to the north. Next exhibit, um, it's currently a vacant site and there is a collector street that's going to be going through there on Brett Avenue. With those collector streets, again, we try to, uh, look at higher densities that try to lessen that impact to the single family homeowners, um, along section line roads and so what they're trying to do is again bring in RA2. RA2 is apartment complexes, it would be up to 48 units per structure, um, in RA2 and this meets our comprehensive plan.
Thanks Jeff, any questions for Jeff? All right, seeing none, with the petitioner, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Mogan, I'm representing 85th Street Park Properties and address 7409 South Bitterroot Place. And are there any questions in regards to the request?
Any questions? All right, I guess we have none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Amy McEwen and 47157, 85th Street, right next east of the parcel. Um, as a residential owner, I am not really prone to having apartment buildings right next to me that could be three stories high. Um, why can't they go on with single family zoning there? I mean, I realize they have to rezone, but wouldn't that be, since there's already a family right there next to it, is that something we can discuss?
Um, we're here to approve the, the application.
Okay, can we?
Jeff was going to come forward and.
Okay.
It, it's not a third option, they can either be approved for ag on the left or they can be approved for apartments on the right. So that's your option, you can approve it or you can deny it. It's not a choice to say, yeah, but could I also have a commercial development or a single family? There's not a third choice.
Okay, come, yeah, please come forward.
I just wanted to state too that Brett Avenue was recently, um, it's been completed up to, um, I was out there just yesterday and they are, um, just getting ready for asphalt, so that street was completed. Clint Ackerman, um, is building a development just to the west, um, West Point, excuse me, townhomes and Brett Avenue will be a, a major collector's street and so there, there will be quite a bit of traffic once that area gets developed. And so, um, the parcel, we are requesting the RA2 because we do anticipate that, um, it wouldn't be appropriate for single family.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Say Bonnie. Is that still a gravel road? Is that 85th paved all the way yet?
It is not paved, but it's my understanding the city's planning to put just a lift of asphalt on it right now because Clint is building townhomes and they will be, um, using 85th Street to, um, to get to Louise, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Uh, yes, my name is Vicky Reeve and my address is 47159, 85th Street. So we are the two little acreages that are left there on 85th Street that have been surrounded by houses. Um, so I think my question is that, or my concern is that there is an elementary school that's just three blocks to the north of this, um, proposed development and so my question is, um, you know, safety for the kids that continue to cross 85th Street, um, to get to the elementary school. Also, um, just the thought that that is the, um, one area that still feels a little country out there and people ride their bikes, they, um, take their kids in their strollers, um, is there going to be something left of that? Um, if we, if this is turned into an urban development with apartments, um, are there going to be any open spaces for the kids still? Are there going to be any sidewalks along 85th that people can still walk or run? Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Madam Chair, motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
Uh, just real quick, it looks like to address the concerns of small kids crossing this intersection, the 85th and Brett appears to be on the docket to be signaledized according to the documents here, so that should go quite a ways towards that safety concern.
Madam Chair, can I ask Jeff to come up for a second?
Yes, Jeff, please come forward.
Jeff, there's been a lot of talk about an interchange, an overpass going through the interstate. Is 85th, if it, if and when it happens, is 85th going to be a connector to that?
It will be the arterial street connector, yes.
So this will be an arterial?
Yes, yep. So it'll be a four lane with a median in the middle, it'll go all the way through just like 57th Street, 16th, 8th and 85th Street. Brett is the collector that will go north and south. If you go back to the zoning exhibit again, thank you, that one, you can see the north, there's Brett, we approved that one last month and you have the single family to the east and the RA to the west and so Brett goes up north and that's where it collects the traffic all right to the school. Um, and so then there'll be sidewalks on Brett, there'll be sidewalks on 85th Street. We moved up the improvements on 85th Street through this area just because of these two projects. So we're gonna, you know, when there's no improvements out here, there's no development, there's no reason to make the roads improved, but since these came in, now we put it in the CIP to get these projects done, so.
So when you're saying the CIP, that's somewhere down the road, the city will come in and completely rebuild this street?
16 and 17.
16 and 17.
Yep.
How wide will that arterial be then? Is that a?
A hundred feet of right of way. Yep, four lanes, two lanes in each direction.
Thank you Jeff.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, just to address the kids crossing the street to go to school, um, there is a committee, a city, uh, committee, that's the PATH Committee and they meet once a month and it's, um, uh, police, traffic engineers, school officials and then concerned citizens and their entire, um, uh, concern is to make sure that there are appropriate signals, crosswalks, um, sidewalks, et cetera, so that each school, um, in the Harrisburg, Brandon and Sioux Falls has, um, a safe pathway to school. So I have a lot of faith in Heath Hoffteiser, who really leads that committee, to ensure that the children that are living in this neighborhood will have a safe route to school.
All right, thanks Sharon. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I sympathize with the neighbors, uh, this is really a growing area out there, there's, uh, townhomes, homes being built. I think there's going to be a lot of work done on that and I think what I weigh in my mind is on an arterial, arterial, you know, would this be an appropriate use for that? I know it's a change, particularly for the people living in acreages out here, but I think it's something that's just going to involve a time. I guess I'd, I'd support the rezone.
Thanks Kenny.
And I guess my thought is, uh, to have this move from ag to RA2 makes some sense. Uh, it is on the corner of an arterial and a collector's street, that's going to be a fairly busy area, so, uh, that's a good place for apartments and those kinds of developments just because they help to buffer that neighboring, uh, single family residential that's nearby and, uh, to be honest, a single family residential on this particular property would be a challenge to sell those lots would be my guess on that kind of a busy intersection. So, makes some sense to me.
All right, thank you, we've had some good discussion, hopefully it helps to resolve some of your concerns. We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Item nine, 3507, 2015, conditional use permit amendment to allow an electronic message center in a residential zoning district and amend the condition placed by the Planning Commission at the October 7, 2015 Planning Commission meeting located at 1400 South Duluth Avenue.
Thank you. This item was at your meeting last month also. Um, it's an existing church along Spring Avenue just west of Minnesota Avenue and there was a condition placed on your approval that they were placing two signs at this location. One is facing to the east towards the commercial and one is facing to the west to Duluth. Okay, you can see on the aerial picture here, one is to the east and then one is to the west. Staff has some support on the one to the east at 30 square feet, a 30 square feet sign, but the sign to the west that was going, facing the residential, we placed a condition at 15 square feet, half the size of the sign. That motion went through, you guys passed it. The applicant's here tonight to try to talk to you about the impacts that condition has and if there's a subsequent condition you may want to place upon it to address the issues. He's given you some good examples tonight of different ideas, um, and I'm just going to kind of turn over the applicant to see if there's something to address the two different signs.
All right, thanks Jeff, could the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jeff? Uh, we approved this, but it didn't go to city council, it hasn't had a reading at city council?
It does not go to city council. Your approval's final.
Madam Chair, Jeff, one other question? This, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so the discussion about why the smaller sign on the west side?
Certainly. Um, when you have a conditional use, you can put conditions on it that mitigate some of the impacts. So there aren't certain standards that are in the ordinance for electronic message centers adjacent to residential, there's just nothing written in there. So we had to come up with one that would be appropriate in this location as well as other locations. Um, again, I've already stated for the record that we want it to be enforceable and not discriminatory, so we basically said, well, let's just go with half the sign. Half the sign's appropriate, you know, they were asking for 30 square feet, 15 seemed to be. sign's appropriate, you know, they were asking for thirty square feet, fifteen seemed appropriate. It was half it, it was half the impact on a residential district. It just seemed appropriate that we, if they're asking, their initial request was, can we have two thirty square feet signs, sixty total, a thirty and a thirty. And we went, that just seems a lot for facing a residential neighborhood. Let's go with fifteen on that one side. So it went through pretty quick. Now the applicant goes, there are some challenges with doing a fifteen square foot sign, and he has to talk to you about that. Thank you. Yep.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Would the applicant please come forward?
I'm Brian Friends, representing Zion Lutheran Church, fourteen hundred South Duluth. Last month, I guess when we went through the process, we didn't really know what the effect these changes would be on there. And since then, we learned that, you know, with these two different sized signs, we're going to have two different controllers and we're going to have to build two different layouts on the software, one to go to each sign. And potentially, we couldn't even do the same graphics on both signs because they just wouldn't fit. And so I guess, you know, based on that, the, the two signs need to be of equal size so that we can build it once and send it to one controller to feed both signs. And so I guess I would ask that the council reconsider our request of, of going with the ten by three signs or thirty square foot signs on each side, on the east and the west side as originally shown. These signs are, you know, fully dimmable and fully programmable. And I know I had sent the, some of the software pages along, but, you know, you can dim these things by the hour, you can dim them from a hundred percent to nothing. And I guess I don't know if there's any specifics that, that city ordinances look for, for, for dimming on these. I guess we would probably rely on our signage vendor and our manufacturer to help us set these things up so that they dim properly, you know, during the evenings and, and different times. You know, I look a few blocks to the west at, was it First Baptist Church? And they've got a fairly similar sized sign, I believe. And they have similar residential houses, you know, half a block away from them also. And it'd be interesting to know, you know, what's different in their area. I'm guessing they're probably zoned differently. So we also, you know, have, have put our signs up twice. And I believe letters go out to all the adjacent neighbors and such like that. And, and as far as I know, none of them have come forward with any, you know, criticism or, or questions or anything on the, on the matter. So I also learned through this process that, you know, within the next year or so, there's a potential that, that this property's going to be rezoned in S1 as just kind of some cleanup for the shaped places. You know, this church is too tall to be zoned residential. And so we're going to be zoned in S1. And if I understand it right, with the, the zoning of an S1, we don't have to have a conditional use to have this type of a sign, I believe, if I understand it right. So I guess that's about what I come to forward with is that I would ask that you reconsider our request from last month.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, is there any questions? Denny?
Refresh our memories, please. Refresh our memories and tell us the hours of operation that the signs will be on.
Well, I guess at this point, we, there's no stipulation as to when they need to be on or off, I don't believe. So our thoughts were to run them twenty-four seven, but dimming them in the evenings, probably brightening them during the day, if I understand how the technology works so that they kind of overcome the sunlight. We can dim them if somebody comes forward with a recommendation and asks us to, or turn them off, you know, at a certain point in the evening. But I guess there was nothing necessarily stated last month.
And you haven't had a groundswell of concerns about this proposal?
Not that I've heard of yet.
Madam Chair.
You've also noted on these other pages of alternative suggestions, I suppose these are, it looks like from the sign company, of a two by seven sign, a three by five, and a three by eight. Could you speak to those and why those are in our packet?
Well, these are just some, some layouts of, of the difference between a thirty square foot and a fifteen square foot. And, you know, basically showing you that the, the content really isn't even going to look the same. So we're going to have to lay it out differently. And I guess I did go to our signage vendor and asked them for kind of a compromise package of a three by eight sign, which would come out to a twenty-four square foot sign as, you know, kind of our compromise package, you know, that we come forward with, I guess, if the three by ten did not go through. Again, you know, kind of the main concern is that these two signs be of the same size so that we can program them once with the same content, send it to it, and, and not have to have differing layouts for different signs.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Friends, these signs were always intended to be on the building as described here in this, correct? They were never going to be like, street level? What do you call those kinds of signs?
Well, initially, we had looked at maybe putting them on the face of a monument sign that we had there.
Thank you.
But cars coming from the, from the east, from Minnesota Avenue would have good sight, line of sight of that. But because of the way the building lays in there, cars coming from the west probably wouldn't see it until they're right on it. And, and so then we decided to put them up on the building for a couple of different reasons. Number one, to get a little better line of sight, and also to get them up a little higher away from mischief.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
With these signs, with the control units, it does make sense that they, different sized signs wouldn't work the same and play the same, if you will. In the absence of no one talking against this, are, are we attempting to make an issue out of something that may never be to their detriment? I, I'm a little, I didn't realize these were going to be on the building and the eastward facing sign, or the westward facing sign, excuse me, is almost a, half a city block until you get to another house. Seems like a lot of overkill here with stipulations for this, so.
Madam Chair, Kurt, you took the words right out of my mouth. I think we're kind of jousting at windmills here for no good reason at all. If we had a groundswell of people in here saying, no, 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 I think then maybe we'd take it, we should probably take a different posture. But in this particular instance, I see no harm in letting them have this sign at the same size as the other one.
All right, thanks, Denny. Any other discussion?
Jeff, could you come up for just a moment? I'd like some clarity on if this were denied, then the original stipulation of the fifteen square feet toward the west remains?
Nope.
Or, okay.
This is, now it's been brought forward to you, this is the new conditional use, basically, at this point. So you have a conditional use in front of you today, and you're approving or denying it with a condition. It's been brought back before you.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
And Jeff, would, excuse me. Sorry, Madam Chair, I don't know if this is for you or for Kurt. Is the, so the motion is for a three by ten on both sides? Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be, if that wasn't clear, that we were talking about eight foot by three foot. But considering everything I've heard, I would detail my motion to say up to, two signs up to thirty square foot in size.
Jeff, Madam Chair, Jeff, are we setting a precedent here? Would you be concerned about that going forward as more churches have a desire to do signs? And I think we just heard a little bit of that right now. Gee, First Baptist, you know, has a sign and why do they have it?
Right. You know, because what we tried to do is, we tried to reduce the impacts between the commercial and the residential district, just because the point he brought up. Well, there's nothing you can do once they get put up, when those residents on the other side complain to us and say, wow, that's bright, or that's a problem. Just because we don't have any people here tonight, doesn't mean they're not going to complain. We're going to go, well, there's nothing we can do about it now. It's going to be bright at ten o'clock or midnight at two o'clock in the morning. We're, they're going to call. If they don't call, but if somebody calls, there's nothing we can do about it. We're going to say, that's why we just looked at it. What, what, is there a solution or not? That's what we tried to come up with, to give them something, to say, well, we reduced it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Any other discussion?
I, excuse me, yes, Madam Chair, I have a hard time. We, we discussed it, we reduced it to a smaller size, but now we're going to put it back to the original. So originally, we said, you know what, there is some neighborhood impact, but now we're going back to thirty square feet. I'm gonna, you know, I have a hard time agreeing with the thirty square feet on each side. Again, nobody's here to say no, but I do know that on some of these signs, we put the stipulation that it goes off at midnight, ten o'clock. Because of that volume and noise and the impact on the residential neighborhoods. Again, to go the thirty square feet on both sides just seems an extreme to me, considering we followed, or we listened to staff, staff had done some research. They said, you know what, we need to mitigate that on the east side a little, or the, the west side a little bit. But we're now taking, saying, no, we're going to just give it the full-blown thing and, and let it go. I have a hard time with that. I don't know what to rest you. But I can't support thirty square feet on both sides. Okay. I would make comment, Madam Chair, that no one was here to talk about this last month either, when this was presented in terms of the neighborhood having an issue with this. The difference for me is now that this is going to be mounted to the building and not monument signs. That's a big difference. Because that's an entire property lot away, and you have to go across the street before you get to the nearest residential impact, which no one's here to have an issue with. Jousting at windmills, I think.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gasper, the thing for me is that there was some new information we didn't have a month ago. We didn't understand and didn't know that it was going to be perhaps even a financial burden to have two different units and two different kinds of programming. In light of that, reasonableness would suggest to me at least that we're, we're fighting over something that shouldn't probably be a big argument. I think we should approve this.
I'm also opposed to it. I like the idea of reducing the size of the sign toward the residential area. I put myself in a place of somebody that's a neighbor and thinking about whether I'd want that larger sign shining in through my bedroom window. And so I think it makes some sense to me to mitigate that in some way. And reducing the size of that sign is a good start.
Yes.
Jeff?
I have to clarify, Danny Brown corrected me, in your staff report, in the staff recommendation, page fifty-five, it says, this is an amended conditional use. Okay, so whether you approve or deny it right now, he already has his conditional use that you guys approved, and it didn't go to City Council. So it does not go away. And then they brought in a conditional use to see if you wanted to amend it. So I misspoke earlier tonight that might weigh on how you.
So just for clarification, the one we approved last month?
Is already approved.
Approved, it's in place.
Yes.
That's what I had assumed, too.
All right.
Yeah, because I'm kind of having a hard time with it too, just because I know since it's a little higher up, it's going to project a little farther and it's going to be a little brighter for the neighbors. I'm having a hard time making it bigger.
Those are all Valakin. Madam Chair, especially the, the thirty square feet. That's what, you know, we've pushed everything all the way up to the thirty square feet again. I know that the proposed amendment is to go twenty-four by twenty-four. Or twenty-four square feet on each side, three by eights. And Madam Chair, my comment would be, do we have a history of the Zion Lutheran Church being a bad neighbor? If the sign projects, if the sign's too bright, if the sign is too obnoxious, are they not going to take action to mitigate that, whatever size it is?
No. The only thing that we have is we have no control over controlling times or anything. So I mean, they can do whatever they want. I mean, we have to look out for that neighbor next door. So even if they're not here right now, they're going to be calling and complaining if they have a problem with it.
All right, we've had some good discussion. Kurt, could you restate your original motion, please, just for clarification as to what we're voting on?
My motion was to approve it up to a thirty square foot sign on each side, east and west facing.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just seconding.
Oh, okay. All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, same sign?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I think we need to move to hands. Denise, did you get that?
No.
All right, let's do it again. All in favors, please raise your hand. We have three in favor. All opposed? Five opposed. Motion does not pass. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Item ten, thirty-six seventy-eight, twenty fifteen, alternative, alternative site plan for signage, alternative site plan located at sixteen hundred West Russell Street.
This property got rezoned to C4 recently. In the C4 district, you have the ability to come in and get an alternative sign plan approved through the transparency of having it publicly discussed. With shaped places, alternative sign plans have the ability to be reviewed based upon the standards, that the proposed standards, the proposed signs are architecturally and aesthetically compatible with the major structures of the subject property. The proposed signs are consistent with the standards in shape Sioux Falls, the conference of plan. And there's five standards that are listed here. The larger signs may be warranted when a street or highway designed with speeds and sight distances. The proposed signs should be only as large as what is required to adequately communicate what those standards are in that area. Again, because they're larger, proposed signs should be spaced far enough from other signs. Proposed signs shall be oriented away from residential neighborhoods. And if there's a pedestrian-oriented district, it should be scaled appropriate. Based upon these standards set forth in shaped places, and again, I should mention this, in overall, there's freestanding signs and there's wall signs. In the full package, I could go through the total, but they're meeting the overall signage, but they need more in the freestanding and less in the wall signs. So they are asking for more in freestanding, but less in the wall signage. So by meeting the conference of plan, by basically meeting those standards in the alternative sign plan, staff is recommending approval.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, if I may. When I drive by this building, it, it looks to me like they've got a sculpture of a helicopter sitting on the one end.
Correct.
Is that considered a sign, or is that considered a piece of art, or how's that?
We counted it as part of the sign. Yep.
And you made that calculation?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is that a sculpture, or is that an actual helicopter?
It's not an actual.
It's not? Thought maybe you went out and bought one somewhere.
Going for a test drive later.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Would the applicant please come forward?
Jeremy Josephson with Ace Signs, 403 North Kiwanis, representing Badlands Pond at 1600 West Russell. Any questions? Can you sum that up for us, I think?
Any questions for the applicant? All right, I guess not. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Item 11, 3590, 2015, Initial Development Plan Amendment in the Lake Lorraine pedestrian-oriented planned unit development to allow an increase in signage allowance located at the southeast corner of South Marion Road and West Lakeshore Boulevard.
Good evening, Diane DeCoyer with Planning Staff. The application here is an Initial Development Plan Amendment. The applicant is Steve Van Buskirk with Van Buskirk Companies. The owner is Friesen Family LLC. The applicant is requesting approval of an amendment for the master signage plan for this POPUD. At the initial development plan, we didn't have a real detailed plan for their signage package, so they've been able to provide that information to us at this point. It does, as indicated on the plan with a graphic, they've indicated the size, the area of each of the plans for gateway and entrance signage, multi-tenant monument off of Marion Road, and then also multi-tenant monument off of the interstate, and the locations as previously depicted on the site plan. Staff feels as though what they've proposed works with the development, and we are recommending approval for it.
All right, thank you, Diane. Any questions? Diane? All right, seeing none, would the applicant please come forward?
Good evening, Steve Van Buskirk, 5800 South Remington Place. Just be available for any questions that you might have about what we're up to.
Right, any questions for Steve?
Madam Chair, Mike, my hat goes off to you figuring all this out, where all these signs are going to go.
It took a little while.
Good job.
Yeah, no, it did. It's a, we're trying to do something a little out of the box, a little unique, and so it took a little while to get it all sorted out. But I think it's our second or third run at trying to figure out the signage part, so hopefully we're done after this one, right, Diane?
Well, if staff has reviewed this, I feel very, very comfortable.
Yeah, thanks.
I also like the way that it looks like you've integrated three different scales into a very similar sign that has kind of a theme, and that really shows some consideration for design, and how the sign can be more than just a big box sitting on a post.
Right.
Like compliments.
Right, yeah. And that's, you know, these, you know, these lifestyle centers, these master plan communities, signage is actually a big... Signage landscaping is kind of some of the big threads in it. You know, you're trying to do placemaking, which is trying to, so it's not a bunch of individual developments all surrounded, you know, are surrounding a lake. What you're trying to do is create a sense of that you're at Lake Lorraine. You're arriving at Lake Lorraine. You drive by, you see Lake Lorraine. So signage is an important piece, and trying to keep that all together. And then landscaping actually sews all those different architectural styles. You know, you've seen Grand Living, which is Cape Cod. You've seen Cars for Sale come through. I think that came back through again. So that's kind of more of a contemporary corporate office look, you know. So you're starting to see some different things. But it's the landscaping, the signage, that'll provide that consistency as you, as you work yourself to the site and around the site.
Very nice.
All right, thanks, Steve.